I'd like to welcome everybody tonight for the Springbrough Board of Education meeting for June 14, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the [inaudible 00:01:24].
We need the [inaudible 00:01:25].
Back here.
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 To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every objective.
Is there a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Second.
Your call.
Yes.
Yes.
Palatine.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
One, three, is there a motion to accept May 24, 2023?
Second.
Your call.
Yes.
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 Two point one, anyone from the Springbrough Education Association?
Oh, I, well, I have a question. Oh, yeah, I'll go. Is it possible when we have contracts for administrators that we're approving, instead of just putting the class and step, could we actually put what the salary is so that we have it right there? And then if for some reason we ever wanted to go back and look at the contract three years ago, we would know what it is? And then we don't have to worry about finding the pay schedule because I have no idea what the administrative pay schedule is? And that might be nice, too, if we maybe post that on the HR page, the teacher contract? Is that possible?
We could discuss it.
Yes. Okay.
Salary is in the contract itself, in the contract. That's something.
Yeah, we actually have, the salary schedule is on our Google Doc for when you guys approve.
There, I just meant, because I thought you mentioned the salary itself. That's in the contract.
It says the staff, it was.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, it says the staff, it was.
Yeah, the contracts don't actually have the salary in there.
Yeah.
So you're saying that it's available and you're just asking for it to be easier?
Yeah, it was in the contract, and when somebody's looking at the contract, they know what it is. And like I said, if we were to pull up, you know, Mr. Martin's contract from his first year of teaching or being an administrator here, we would know what the salary was and we wouldn't have to go back and find it all the pay schedule or something like that.
Two point two, classified employees. Any public participation on an agenda item? Don't think our voice cameras would want to say it. Didn't have any public participation. All right, let's move on to the work session. Strategic plan.
Yes. Mr. President, members of the board, I am both excited and proud to have our administrative team update you on the progress of our strategic plan tonight. Focused efforts and hard work have truly yielded results, and our strategic plan issue has been a roadmap that has been a constant focus. I've tried to take mine together multiple times now because it's been helping us so much. We have discussed this monthly in our EFT meetings, the principal views of the strategic plan to guide our professional goals, all of our schools and departments. We had an active Google Doc where we recorded results and things that we were doing in order to constantly monitor our progress. So I'm going to turn it over to each individual that can bring up points on a section this year so that you can get an update on the accomplishments. And then we are going to give you a few points of where we're going to focus for next year. And then I'm going to come back and close the presentation because I'm excited to reveal something that we worked on today as a cabinet team in order to make this strategic plan a little bit more easier to navigate for us. I'm going to turn it into something a little bit different, so I'll let you know what that is.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Mrs. Mooney and I are pleased to be able to address you this evening on the first segment, which is assuring that our students are ready to graduate, ready for life in the areas in which they desire to follow through with. So in order to do so, we're going to set this presentation up whereby we go over what do we do this year and what are our plans for next year. So you'll see that throughout the presentation with all of the presenters, what have we done and where are we going? So I'll start out with what we have done in this particular area, and Mrs. Mooney will tell you a little bit about where we're going. And then we will wrap it up with just some overview of how excited we are to talk to you a little bit about our students being ready to follow the path that they desire in life. So to start out, what we'd like to talk about is we addressed you back in fall regarding district-wide areas for career-based items for kids to learn in K through 12. So oftentimes, when we think about careers, when we think about graduation, we think about those students in grades nine through 12. However, our career exposure starts with our very youngest learners, and it goes throughout through to our 12th graders. And that encompasses all students within Springbrough schools. So we engaged with visitors coming to our classrooms and community members to discuss their careers with our youngest learners, all the way through our high school students. We have reinstituted our Career Day. It was very successful this year. Mrs. Holtry coordinated that along with the Ohio Means Jobs Group out of Columbus and the Southwest Office, as well as our Chamber of Commerce. So we were excited to be able to use our Chamber of Commerce as a partner to be able to put that on. Our STEM-related courses at the high school and junior high continue to have very high enrollment, very popular courses. We were thrilled to find out this year that two of our IT students have graduated from the UC program, one with her bachelor's, one with a master's degree. So that program that we brought in about six years ago is working very well for some of our students when they take their courses here in IT with those partnerships through College Credit Plus, through the University of Cincinnati program, ending with a master's degree. So we were thrilled to hear about that, but that is a lead-in from junior high school through high school and into the college area. As I said, the Ohio Means Jobs Organization in Columbus has regional offices throughout the state of Ohio, and Mrs. Holtry worked with the committee to use the Ohio Means Jobs Organization to bring businesses in, to tap into those areas in the Springbrough area, as well as the Springbrough Chamber of Commerce, to get our local businesses to come in and meet with our students, as well as military. So some students came out of that Career Day with jobs for the summer. Others learned about the possibility of internships next year, and our military folks were there as well from all branches of the service, so we were excited about that. We did bring in the U-Science curriculum this year to all of our 10th graders in our personal finance class. That allowed our students to take career-based inventories that place them into the career clusters and give them a closer focus on those career clusters that not only do they have an interest in, but they also have an aptitude in. So those were some of our hot points for this year, and Mrs. Mooney's going to tell you a little bit about what's coming.
So for a carryover for 2324, the career-focused activities for the district-wise, we'd like to continue to expand the speakers and look at diverse roles within our community, continue with parent visits in different career fields, community members to discuss careers at the Career Day. Also, we'd like to continue to develop that Ohio Means Jobs collaboration and the Springbrough Chamber of Commerce. I also do know that we are also working with our Rotary Club within the community also. We would like to look at the feasibility of the junior high students participating in the Career Day event at the high school. And then the career goals and interests discussed that will be monitored as we are going to have advisory periods at the high school level. We'll continue with the U-Science curriculum expansion program and then Introduction into Personal Finance. And to replace the NaviX program is they are looking at the SchoolLinks program for the students to start developing their pathways on a computer-based program.
So between the U-Science program and SchoolLinks, we're hoping that our students have a clear path by Career Day as to which different career clusters that they would most benefit from visiting. So this year, it was somewhat of a free-for-all with all businesses, but this coming year, we're looking at more of a funnel using those two programs to identify career cluster areas, and then also from our office, make sure that we have the proper individuals for them to talk with.
Can we ask questions now?
Yeah.
Because you want to ask questions after every section, like right now.
So you do have another section to go. Yeah, we do have another section to go. Because my answer, and I think I know where you're going to go with this. The other thing, too, is that we do have, on our next slide, is strengthening these partnerships within our community. So for the, we would like to continue with the work-based exploration program for our special needs population. They have partnered, our high school staff has partnered with the Rotary Club, and we really like to keep our students within our community and to continue to expand that opportunity for our kids. The other thing, too, is with special education, is they are participating in the U-Science program, and with their credentialing, they are able to participate in activities within the school to help them earn their credentials.
Sure. We also have some more career-based type clubs and activities that are happening at the high school. As you can see from the photo on the screen, that is our Envirothon group, so our environmental club competed in Envirothon with other schools in southwest Ohio, using the skills that they've learned through their environmental education club. We also have a Young Professionals Club, so that, those are students who may be a little bit more interested in business. Mr. Holtry is running that club, so means of getting a job. We talk about resumes, talk about interview skills, what it means to find yourself in the career, what you desire, what you need to do to get there. So more support for clubs and activities that allows students to explore careers.
College representative for fall visits, this is something that we would like to continue to expand, to have them come into our school, but also have our students go out to the colleges to start understanding different pathways and different learning opportunities at colleges. So we'd like to continue to expand that, not just locally, but also the internet brings many of schools to us. The military fall visits, also, we would like to have our military force, we, actually at graduation this year, we had a high number of students that went into the military, to have them also come in and work with our students and to understand the pathways and the opportunities that are available for our students with the military visits. The next part that we would also like to strengthen a little bit more is looking at those supports with our groups and our clubs within the school. Andrew and I were talking about this a little bit today. I know that we have a couple of different groups that we're looking at, InterACT, is that one? The InterACT Club, which is, they're reinstating that, is we would like to also have that career opportunity become a focus within that group.
We talked about.
Envirothon Young Professionals. We have a pre-medical, but one time we had a law group of students that were interested in careers in law. So we'll want to try to foster some of those career-based activities back into our schools. I did miss one, I just noticed on my notes. I missed the pre-apprenticeship, so I apologize for not going in order. But we do have on file an application with the Ohio Department of Education with Sinclair being our partner for pre-apprenticeship. So we're just wait, we're waiting for that rubber stamp. I know the paperwork is at the state level, so we're just waiting. We know that we will hear back from them before the school year starts, so we'll start building those partnerships within the pre-apprenticeship areas.
So, couple of questions. What is, you mentioned when students left the job fair, that some had jobs for the summer and that type of stuff. What are we doing to track? Because I know in the past, our Career Day was more your, you knew that at college to get these degrees, whereas Ohio Means Jobs, there was just so many awesome jobs that take an accreditation or something right after high school. So how are we tracking and what are our plans for the future of keeping it like in Ohio Means Jobs or integrating, doing both or?
I think, I think our SchoolLinks program will allow us to pull a lot of that data out. This year, we sent a survey out to all of our graduates to find out what their plans are for post-graduation. We don't have a large amount of responses on that yet because it just recently went out. However, the percentage of students looking at post-secondary versus careers right out of high school or military is looking oddly with a small amount, about the same as what we've seen in past years with that 84-ish percent going off to college and then the other 16% either pursuing a job straight out of high school or military. So we'll keep you abreast of that, but we will be moving, while we'll keep that survey, we will also be moving to more updated information throughout the year through SchoolLinks. So pushing surveys on the SchoolLinks to find out where are you thinking, what can we do? So we're really looking forward to using that software for our students to tell us what their needs are, along with the U-Science program, where we can pull those career clusters and make sure that we're bringing in the right people for them.
So it's been 84% that are going to college after, are we also then, I love the Ohio Means Jobs thing, I thought it was absolutely amazing, but are we also doing something that is responding to those 84% and helping them also have opportunities to talk with people so, you know, so people know more than a policeman, a fireman, a teacher, you know what I mean?
Right, and we're seeking their contact information so that we can reach out to our graduates, which is something we have not done in past years and past years. It's been kind of a, we're so proud of our graduates, see ya, hope you have a nice life. Now we're building that database to be able to make contact with folks after we're out of here.
But I've not even think about those that graduate, I'm not communicating as well. But if we know that a majority of our students are going to college, are we going to have an event that is like what we did with our Career Fair? That was much more focused on careers available right out of high school. Are we also going to have an event that responds to if you want to go to college, these are other opportunities that are maybe different than what you typically know about the typical careers of a doctor? You know what I mean?
Yes, that'll drill down through those clusters. So once we identify those high cluster areas, I hope I'm answering your question correctly, those high areas in certain clusters, we will make sure that we bring professionals in in those areas, whether that be construction, whether that be healthcare fields, go in and find out what are our top areas and who do we need to invite, who do we need to seek out to come in and talk to our students.
So there might be a separate event, or will we incorporate?
That would be incorporated with that.
Into that event, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
I was just gonna, because I know, I didn't do it this year with Ohio Means Jobs, and I know I've done it previously, and there were other, more professional.
Yeah, it was different this year.
That's what I'm saying, so did it change a little bit? Because I know.
It did change.
You had a lawyer before, and you had, you know, all kinds of different careers represented.
Yeah, it changed by going through the Ohio Means Jobs and as well as our Chamber of Commerce and our availability of speakers. But this year, once we have that data for the clusters, we're going to do more of a filter-down version where we need to see what are students interested in, where are their attributes that we need to invite?
Because it seems like, yeah, maybe some of that's.
I agree.
But having the representation, you can sort of serve that. Yeah, that's my recollection of. Maybe it was a little more, the other way.
It was the way to the other way.
Yeah, not a pendulum swung like the other direction.
Right, which I liked that we had so many there. I just, when you spend those percentages, I'm like, well, we need to make sure we also are addressing those, the 84% and not just the 16. I love what I saw this year, I really, really did, because we don't typically do that in Springbrough. It is, these are the professions you can go to college and do, and that's not what is best for everybody.
Right, and our chamber was a big help with that, so we expect to tap into them even further in the future. Those were two partners that we had not used in the past.
Right.
So they were a big help. I think we just need to feed them more specific information.
That makes sense. I just had two other questions. One is, you mentioned in the PowerPoint about an advisory period. How is that going to be different than what we currently do? Like, how is it going to be used, I guess?
Well, we will start with House School 123. I think I brought this up to our board in the past, so we have some legislation that we are required to follow with regards to violence, student violence and dating. Those particular areas, we'll be working with our counselors. We also have a team at Hamilton County ESE that is working with us as a committee to build those lessons out for our students. We'll be using a curriculum that is one to be heavily used in southwest Ohio. So we'll start out with hitting our legislative pieces, as well as how are we using our SchoolLinks and how are we using the U-Science data? So our advisory is going to look a lot different this year, particularly in 912. I don't know, Mr. Martin, you want to?
We're still in discussions of how that's going to be, what it's going to look like, but that's what we're transitioning into, more of a routine with that. The other thing I would like to add, the whole Career Day thing, I was kind of putting my hand up a little bit. I felt like this year with our, with our Career Fair was more of a job fair, and I think sometimes you have to look at jobs and careers, sometimes it's not the same thing. So we talked about kind of, it kind of swung a little bit the other way, where I didn't feel like we had as much representation as far as careers for kids. That was the feedback that we heard from our students. So what we kind of go into next year with it is really embedding more careers, whether it be kids going into a career or whether it be kids going into college into a career, but just more of a true career that kids are doing for 25, 30 years versus a job. I think they both have a purpose, but they're both different when you think about it in that sense. So that's something that we're continuing to work on. I felt like what we did before COVID, it was really heavy career-based, not much job-based. I feel like it's really swung back the other way this year, so.
I would just hope that we present some careers that don't require a college education.
Correct.
That you can, it might be that you're there for 25 to 30 years, you can find the thing that you love and.
Like, we had, like, we had some welding representation.
Yep.
Firefighters were there. I mean, I'm going to say some things, I don't want to be taken out of context, but we also had McDonald's there. And that's not a method, but that's, I mean, I think you have to look at those things as far as they're different. And so there's a need for some of those right now for our kids that are 16, 17, 18, even 19, 20, but if you really start thinking about a career, what do you want that to be? And so that's where we get into that piece of it.
Sure. So with the advisory periods, is there going to be more, like, you're talking like a once a week or a once a month or something like that, beginning of the day type of deal with a whole class? Is that what that period's called?
Not necessarily, maybe beginning of the day, but something a little.
Or someplace, right?
Yes.
So will there be with the new SchoolLinks, more interaction with the counselors of having conversations based off of what you see in the data that that student is needing some extra help or helping guide them?
We'll be using the guidance and when maybe Rose on the screen.
The SchoolLinks piece is something that we're going to embed within our, within those periods, but we kind of really got to dive into SchoolLinks. Like, we had a first training with that last, or two weeks ago, so we got to really dive in to see how do we embed that, what can we do with it?
What can you do with it?
How's that going to work? How can we reach all homerooms? We have six counselors. We don't have, you know, so how does that, what does that look like? So the first key is getting more of a routine set for that period, what is that going to look like? And then we'll kind of go from there with how we embed that. But SchoolLinks is definitely a big piece of that, when you get into just careers, seals, all that type of stuff.
My last question is, you mentioned U-Science and SchoolLinks, and last week is what, or two weeks ago, you presented on SchoolLinks, right?
Right.
That's the NaviX. I'm not sure what U-Science is, and how does that connect with SchoolLinks?
Okay, U-Science is a program where students take a series of assessments and their interest inventories, as well as aptitude. So if I have an interest in veterinary science, but I don't have an aptitude, for instance, in mountain science, it's going to possibly direct me in a manner where I may become a vet tech as opposed to a veterinarian. So it takes that interest and the aptitude and merges that into career fields that you would be good at, that you would enjoy. Because we don't necessarily want to direct students into being an accountant, just because they have the line for that, but they have no interest in that. So it merges both.
Is that part of SchoolLinks?
It's a separate program that they can speak to each other, so using the data from one to the other.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. That's my question, please.
The last thing I was, I was going to ask, but you already answered it, and I just kind of expressed my desire to see some of those metrics you're talking about, because this one, it feels like it is measured after they leave here, so anything we can do to sort of, you know, it's difficult to try to sort of, maybe to survey our graduates and try and sort of get some objective measures that we can sort of use to help track our progress on that as well. I'd be interested in seeing.
We also did a survey of our class of 22.
Yeah.
So we sent out a survey to the class of 22 from last spring. So hopefully that data.
Yeah, I know it's probably tough to get that, but I just, would be good to, to the extent we can try to gather some of that and objective feedback and have some measures that we can look at as we go forward. I think this is all great, everything that we're doing, we're doing the right things, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, you want the students to answer yes to that question, right? If you're here with, you're ready to achieve success, I mean, that's ultimately, I just, we could get some way to objectively measure that.
The other thing that's good with the, the past year survey is a lot of kids think they have an idea of what they're going to do with it. Graduates of 23 say, I'm going to go do A and B. Well, next, by next year, there's time they're doing D and E. So now that you know that a year later, what feedback can you give us? I mean, you think about the value, how valuable that is for us, it's huge, because kids' plans change. And so how do, now that you're in this plan, how do we prepare you best for that? Because I think if you surveyed the class of 23 right now versus next year, I think you'll get a lot of different information. And so that's something we started doing this year for the first time in a year at the end, too.
Well, I think, I think that's brilliant, because like, I think about my boys, they talk about Mrs. Llewellyn and that she legit changed scores of theirs on their ACT because of how she taught. She didn't really teach it, like, she taught it in such a way. That's not good. She, she taught them so that they knew how to respond to an ACT test. And they didn't like it when they were in it, but they reflected, once they were in college and they saw what was expected of them, they're like, completely, Mrs. Llewellyn made a difference. And so I think that, you know, that, they wouldn't have told you that, their junior, senior year, but once they're in college, they absolutely gave her the credit for that. So I think it's good to reflect back with the students for next year. She didn't change course.
Okay, exactly. If that, if those are all the questions for last segment, we're going to move into engaging innovative educational experiences, and Ms. Gruber's going to address the K5 pieces first, what we did, what we will be doing, and then I will do the same for six fall.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, K5, looking back, I want to start with data-driven instruction. Once, if you look at the, the actual strategic plan, it's tied to the OTEs that goal, but more importantly, it's just good instruction when we're looking at data and making decisions and being responsive. So as you know, last year, we implemented math reading in math for all, for all of our K5 students. What it did for us was give us real-time information about where kids were ready to learn. So we took that information and did fall and winter data meetings with each grade band. So we sat down with those teachers and we looked at the data that we had in real time, but we also took it a step further of what does that mean? What groups can we pull together to enrich? Which kids need enrichment? Where do they need enrichment in? Which kids can we pull together to do some intervention with that needed some intervention in different areas? So that's, that's kind of how that went last year, as far as using that data to make some good decisions. Second, we wanted to look at our literacy practices and processes, which started two years ago, but then this past year, we did fully implement a new phonemic awareness supplemental curriculum, all of K2. We piloted a phonics program in some first and second grade classes, and through feedback, have decided, and teachers before the pilot was even over were asking, can I get one of those? Can I get that one? Can I get that? What is that? And so this coming school year, we'll be using it, that curriculum in all K2 classrooms. And also purchased it for third-grade teachers so that if they had kids that were coming in that were still struggling a little bit, they could go back and do some of those lessons to help with those kids. We had 60 additional Springbrough teachers who are being trained in Armillyham this summer, about 30 last week, and then we have 30 coming next week. Good feedback from them as well, I haven't talked to all of them, obviously, but some sent emails and said, thank you so much, this was great training. Sarah Gerster and I teamed up and did some professional development during the day with our, all of our K5 intervention specialists on the science of reading and just what that means for shifting practices, not just in a tier-one gen ed classroom, but also for our intervention specialists working with small groups in tier-two and three. As far as technology goes, we added this year additional collaborative touchboards to our K5 classrooms, but we didn't get all of them completed, but we're very close now. And we also did a pilot on a program called Math Accelerator, which is, currently, we use a program called Freckle for our third, fourth, and fifth grade kids in math, and it kind of helps, helps meet them where they are in an ed tech program and gives them some activities at their level. But we piloted the. Accelerator pilot, or piloted it because it ties to the kids' math score, right? So if they get a certain score in math, it will automatically push out lessons and activities that are at their level and what they're ready to learn. Thirteen different teachers piloted, and all 13 asked to have it replace our current program. And the greatest news about that is Math Accelerator is a little bit cheaper, too, for kids, so it's a win-win for us. So that will be something that we'll talk about the next slide. As far as instructional practices and curriculum materials, we rolled out our Amplify Science to all grade one through five. Tracy met with that team. Tracy met with that team of teachers two times this year to reflect and revise and think, okay, here's where we are. We've gotten these, these units done. How do we need to revise that to get finished through the year? And then she did the same thing at the end of the year to make sure people didn't have questions or how we can make sure we roll into next year ready to go. We're also looking to, we're meeting with the Amplify team in a couple of weeks to, to talk about possibly looking for some coaching and job embedded PD around the Amplify Science program. It really does take science and a lot of reading and writing standards and make a cross-curricular program. So there's a lot there. If you were always a science teacher and you didn't teach reading or you didn't teach writing necessarily, there's a lot of pieces in there that are new. So we thought, we're hoping that maybe if we can get some coaches from Amplify into the building to work alongside teachers versus us sit and get professional development, we can really help make sure that teachers really truly understand and can use all the parts of the program. So we're looking at that next week. The other thing we worked on this year was continuing our language arts pacing guides, K all the way through five and just kind of making sure we have some vertical alignment. So we know where kids end in kindergarten or where we need to pick up in first grade and, and making sure that we're not, we're using all of our instructional time the best we can. So that was something that we did this year too. That was this year. In a nutshell, obviously, there was about 100 million other things that happened, but that was the, in a nutshell. Next steps, so back again to that data-driven instruction. This year, and this is on the agenda later on, we are hoping to add science just for grade five, the math assessment, because that's the only grade in elementary that's also tested OSD in science is grade five. So we're hoping by, by using that, because they take it in the fall, winter, and spring, it's that real time, we can kind of figure out, you know, where our strengths are in science and where we need to maybe do some extra work, you know, prior to that assessment. So that's coming up. Also, we're going to continue with those same data meetings that we talked about. Tracy and I will be in every one meeting with the teams and the building administrator or administrators if possible. That's how we work this year also. Our goal is to just continue to support teachers with that intervention and enrichment and, and not just looking at the data. The reports are beautiful. Our color coded, I mean, they're so pretty. It doesn't really matter if you can't take it from there to the next step of what we want to do to help kids. We're also going to add a piece for goal setting. That's a nice one about math and being real time also. Students know in the fall what their score is and what they're projected to get in the spring. And so we can, there, there are all kinds of ways that we can, that teachers can sit and. And have them set their own goals. Okay, if I need to be here at the end of the year, how am I going to get there? How am I going to, what's my goal then for winter? What are the things that I'm going to own as a student to help myself get there? So that's kind of a piece we want to add in to the data part. For literacy, like I said, we're, we'll be implementing youth phonics. We're also bringing dream, dream box reading park. That's only K-1. We have dream box math. This is the reading component. That K-1 has not had a ed tech program that was solely dedicated to literacy and reading. And so this will be a new, they've been asking, and this is one that we found that enriches and enriches. We're also bringing in math reading fluency. That will be our dyslexia screener. It's approved by ODE as a tier-one screener. So we'll be screening every student in grades K-1, 2, and 3. And that's per, for the law for next year. And last but not least in literacy, we have brought on Jacqueline Corolla as our literacy coach for the coming few years. I've been talking to her and we're really looking at what's called a student-focused coaching model. So really focusing on the student data, especially that we're getting from math, and how she can come in and support teachers and students in that way versus some of the older coaching models that were, sometimes made teachers feel like there was something wrong with them. And that's how we want to do it, right? We want to build students up. And so really being focused on that student data and how we can, how she can support their instruction. Technology, we'll be adding 18 new clever touchboards to K-5, which will almost, I feel like, will be less than five from every teacher, including our intervention specialist, our reading teachers, our gifted teachers, anybody that has, brings kids into their classroom to teach will have a clever touchboard so that they can be interactive. We're also somewhere near 1,200 new Chromebooks will be coming out in Dennis in five points. I know you've heard that, and our goal is to maintain that two-to-one ratio that we have, but also to make sure that our special ed teachers, our gifted teachers, and our UA specialist teachers have access to devices also if there are things that they want to do. Sorry, I swear I tried to make this really short. He's still a little long. Instructional practices and curriculum materials. So I'm excited because we have two cohorts in elementary and two cohorts in secondary that I'm sure Andrea will talk about that have been invited to, we've got a lot of applications, but we are, have been accepted into what's called the Launch Program. There's a big movement up here right now. It's called the Ohio Personalized Learning Network. And there's a, a lot of resources and things going to that, to that group. So it's a two-year cohort. It includes a, a administrative CEO, a building administrator, a teacher, a couple of teachers, and a coach in each cohort. So it's a team of people who will go and learn about this and then be able to come back and help implement it versus one person going, getting all the information and then trying to get it out to everybody else, you know, in the building. So I'm excited for, for that work and working together with the team to make some of those changes in our classes. Our other goal in this area is really, like I mentioned before, we have a science team of teachers, K-5. And we have an ELA team of teachers that we've been working with over the last couple of years. But really we need to bring on math and a science team, or a social studies team, and an ed tech team to continually cycle through and look at our pacing guides, our resources, our materials, and get the real, real teacher feedback on what they need and what's going well, what we need to change versus waiting years, you know, when it's time for adoption, but continually be reflecting and revising those, those documents. So that's a big goal for next year for us. And that also gives us a group of teachers who are leaders in that area who can also look at the data and look for trends and say, hey, we're really struggling in this area over years. We need to make some changes. So really just building that, that capacity with our classroom teachers and helping them become leaders and, and fostering that is a big goal. So. Sorry. That was it? Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Surprise, surprise. First off, I just love how much you're using data. I just, hearing you reflect back on last year and what you're honeying and doing this year, I just think it's super exciting because we're always going to be an awesome school district, but that's how we take it to that next level. So. Thank you for all of that. I love hearing, I remember when my son was in Mr. Hopkins class and they, it was when kids are struggling with math and they did that with the students is they let them set the goals. And I do think that some kids are ready for that and it's very motivating. So it's great to hear that there's going to be more of that because so many times it's easy for us to set our goals and the kids don't care about it if we get nowhere. So that was, that's a great component. The last is, what are the teachers' responses? I heard you all say a lot of this is new, this is new. What kind of responses are you getting and what are we doing to support the teachers around all of the newness? I think that's something that's been complaining for, for 20 years since we brought it. We bring on so many new things and it's so much to learn. And then just once you learn it, we try something else.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we thought about that at a time. When you're rolling out something like math, right, especially we rolled out K-8, you know, that's like, I don't even know how to use it. It's a lot. And we knew, we had to be, be thoughtful about how we roll out. It's a lot of information. There's how to assess, I mean, how to set up test sessions, how to administer. There's so many parts. Before you even get data, there's so many parts of learning, right? And so we were very intentional about before the school year started, we didn't even want to show them what a report looked like because we don't want it to be fake kids. We wanted, we didn't want them to look at data until it was the kids they knew. So we were very intentional at the beginning of the year, only teaching them how to make a session and how to give a test. Now, that is also not an easy task because there is lots of things that can happen within a testing session. And we tried to be as proactive as we could about that, but everybody felt like they didn't know what they were going, because they didn't. But there was also no way to give them all the information ahead of time. It kind of was a thing where you have to just do it and then the next time you do it, you're like, oh, now I know what to do. So I think some of that at the beginning of the year, there was, oh, you know, there's a lot to learn. And so we, we waited and that's why we really wanted to continue with the data means of being involved in them was because we, like I said before, we wanted them to see their data. So that was one way to support that instead of just saying, hey, you have all this data. Let us know what you're going to do. We sat down, you know, we had a team for four hours, you know, we did half days. So we could really, truly, okay, go kid by kid or group by group and really go through it. Intentionally, instead of in a, you know, PowerPoint or whatever. Have it be their kids and their student data so that it meant something to them. So, I mean, and again, we'll continue doing that, you know, and I, I hope that math doesn't go away. We have to do something, I mean, I hope that we can, it's just such real-time data to use that. Hopefully we're getting to a place where we're not going to be changing things because we're going to be connecting things and buying things that we know meet our goals. And so it makes it easier to keep things around that daily. That's just my.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I guess it applies to both of these, but I'm assuming the report card is probably not sure. But we're sort of tracking, right? See if the thing is really successful, but are there other metrics behind the state report card?
There definitely are. This is, this is obviously always going to be the thing, right? But when you, and I didn't want to actually mention this later, but in September, we're going to do a bigger overview of math and what data we get from it. And I think that it's a metric on its own because it actually gives us like a lot of information on a year, on one year's growth of kids. So that, I think that's another metric we use.
Yeah, it's great to hear all of the things we're doing. Keep coming back to like, what are these objective things that we can measure to track our progress?
Absolutely.
I mean, for future updates.
What Carrie's talking about, Jamie, what she's going to talk about, and we try to build that stuff into it with regular timelines for us to come back to and start to build historical data, right? What does a third grader do on the reading math test in the fall every year? So we're going to have that data and we're going to build that out so that we can track that. It's going to be part of what kids want to know. Sorry, Andrea.
All right, we'll jump into 612 world. In 612, we will be continuing to provide professional development to our teachers and the use of data to improve instruction. This past year, we had math in grades six through eight along with the K-5. We were very deliberate to not include high school because there were four of us doing trainings. And we knew with four of us doing K-8, that was about the amount of time that we had for training. We did not have time to do the high school level training at the same time, nor did we have the time to bring in science eight. So we were, or science five for that matter. So we were very deliberate with a phase one with math and ELA and K-8 of phase two, which I'll be talking about shortly within other grade levels. So I'll go over that shortly. Our value-added data is also data that helps us with growth. While our math data is aligned to Ohio standards, our value-added data from the Ohio State Report Card is that in your face, the community sees it, or districts see it. We need to continue to use that value-added data to make sure that we're getting that growth. So those two different areas, whether we're using Ohio State data or whether we're using math national data are going to be of great importance as we continue on. We did fully implement the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System 2.0 this year. I found that our teachers, not only our teachers, but also our principals who went to the Ohio Principal Evaluation System 2.0, found that they were able to grow significantly through conversations, through the rubrics, through the activities and goal setting that we as a district put forth with them. So that's an area where we, where we worked with our teachers on their engaging innovative experiences within the classroom and they did respond well. It's a lot of work. Some of our teachers probably, I hate to say this, I don't work for myself, but some of them put too much work into it very honestly. But we did see a lot of feedback from our teachers and principals who did a similar system in the principal evaluation system as far as growth. Even this afternoon, I had a conversation with one of our principals who told me, even though this system is a lot of work, I've really gained a lot from it. I was able to do more than I thought I could do because I set goals that I could reach with a lot of work. So I really put forth that work to make sure that those goals were reached. So that while it seems like it's something that the state puts upon us, it did work well with our teachers as far as their growth. When our teachers grow, our students grow. So continually monitoring the growth of both our staff and our students is very important. As listed, we have enhanced technology. This year, we have purchased phase one of the interactive boards for next year. We're very excited about that. You'll see clever in K-5 and smart in 612. Both of those types of interactive boards have worked very well for those particular grade levels. The E-rate density increase and depth, you voted on probably back in February. That, that increase in density is happening this summer at the junior high and high schools. So that is part of this year's E-rate project. So I, I know I've said this to you before, when we started out with Wi-Fi, we were concerned that if every student used their device, that we would have the density to be able to accommodate that. Now we're looking at a phone, a device, a watch. So, so the density that we will have at this building as well as the high school will be able to accommodate well in excess of four devices per person, which we feel is, that's, that's what's going to be necessary. When we brought it in, when we brought our density in, it was one device per student. Now we know that students are wearing them on their watch. They're wearing, or they're carrying them in their pocket. They've got a computer in front of them like you do. So we want to make sure that we continue to increase that density. So we appreciate your help on that this year. And we had also looked at our strategic plan with regards to our international language program. I worked with Mrs. Foner. She's the department chair at the high school as well as Mrs. Hoag and Mrs. Burke down here at the junior high to expand our program to include exploratory language classes for younger junior high learners. So those are non-credit-based courses that allow them to see what is the language about. The curriculum that has been written for those is more of a fun base. So you're learning about your family in the language. You're learning about the cultures in the language, the food. So those items are very high-level interests to our adolescents to try to rope them into those languages. So as, as I moved from what we did this year to what we're doing next year, so we marketed those classes this year. I'll shove us on into next year and I will start, I want to start with that. We will have two courses in exploratory French this coming year after marketing those this past year. And we will have four courses in exploratory Spanish. Those are nine-week courses. One of the questions that's come up over and over is, he and my child take both. So as they're making their decision for their high school language, can they take the French and the Spanish both? Absolutely they can. So we're excited to have kids who are looking at both languages before they get their feet wet in my high school cred. So that was very successful. We do are evaluating literacy programs and processes. We have worked pretty closely with our grade six through eight ELA group. Those teachers have surprised me in requesting more time this summer to be able to work out their maps, to align their thematic units, to make different choices on their novels, which you will see later in the summer. They're working really hard. They, we had our rep in from our HMH program that we adopted a couple of years back to revitalize the program and to go over some of the new nuances that are available in the program. The teachers were excited about that. So we're thrilled to be working closely with 68 ELA. As far as incorporating nonfiction literacy into science and social studies, we are expanding our access within the New Zella program. So that's an artificial intelligence program that the students do a reading test, it assigns them a reading level, and then assigns them, for instance, we're learning about frogs. I may be at a certain exile level that I would not be able to quite understand what you may be able to understand about frogs. So you may be reading at a higher level than I, but we're both hitting standards within that reptile unit. So we're expanding that within our science and social studies. I think they add roughly 1,500 items a day to those databases. So we're excited that our students are willing to have access to more social studies and more science throughout that program in our grade six through eight. We are also again providing more PD to our teachers with our teachers entering math at the high school. And that will be all ELA, grades nine and 10, and our algebra geometry. Mrs. Holtry and I have met with the high school staff twice on this to get them, to get their mind ready for this because this is very different than what they've done in the past. We will also continue to be available for them regarding the value-added data as it comes in in October. They will also be continuing, obviously, with the OTES 2.0 until they come out with a 3.0. Phase two of our technology purchases that you approved back at our retreat will be completed in the spring of next year whereby all classrooms will have an interactive board available for instruction, including specials and unified arts courses. As I said, those exploratory courses did result in student signups. And we will be devising intervention processes addressing all learners through response to intervention at the secondary level in more in-depth than what we have done in the past. So we're enhancing our RTI practices at the 612 level. So what questions can I answer on you with those quick bullet points of what did we do? What are we doing? As related to the plan?
When you talk about RTI, what has been done, like what would be doing, we've been doing different this next year from what we've done in the past?
Jill, do you want to come up? Do you want to come back up? All right. I think, I think Jill is a good example because she sits in so many of our meetings where we want to identify a child as a special education child. We know they're special. We know they use services. We know they need an IEP. So that's why I asked Jill to come up because Jill has worked pretty extensively through RTI whereby we're using data to show what does the child need. We're, we're putting interventions in for students before we're going to the testing round. So Jill, you just want to give a background of what you see in grade. So Jill, you just want to give a background of what you see at grade six, twelve, where it starts.
So a lot of times when they come to the table and there's questions, we look at those interventions that are happening within the classroom, the differentiation of instruction that's been taken place to support the students within that setting. Is it a formalized process? It is, but it's not. So I came from a school district that actually had a formalized process to where we are now in a school district that does implement it and the teachers are implementing strategies and accommodating and leading students at where they are and instructing their learning. So they will, when we come to the table, we have discussions with families and with parents and with students. We're looking at what other supports can we give you within a classroom? Are they accommodations versus those interventions that we're putting in place for a student? So we can add on to the accommodation role. We can absolutely look at those interventions and help teachers, teachers collect that data to make a data based decision to, if we're going to move on to that next step. So what does that look like? So the teachers here, I can say at the junior high for sure, do understand that RTI process. They do reach out to the staff that's within the building. They work with our school psychologists, with our intervention team, same at the high school. And our intervention team is really strong in making sure that, that teachers do understand what an intervention in classroom can look like. So probably more along the lines, we look for more of a formalized process of what does this look like? What's a tier one, what's a tier two, what's a tier three?
So are we currently using scientifically based interventions?
Some teachers are, some teachers are, some teachers are. And sometimes it's that coaching process of helping that teacher and guiding them through that process of what does a data based intervention look like and how do we make decisions from there? Because sometimes when you're looking at an intervention and it's being successful within that classroom, does that special education, and like, can you, how do we support that? So it's educating that staff, it's putting some intervention specialists in place to help support that team. So as we have co-teachers on all of the teams, it is organically happening. But how do you take it when it's, when it's not going the right way is another question.
Is that what we're hoping to do with this next year?
Yes, a formalized process.
I think it goes often to, it's okay to provide interventions without a written plan. And that's, that's a tough pill to swallow for some of our staff. So we need to work with our staff to, to get through that. Any other questions on school? The teachers ready for intervention program and support?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board. Um, it's kind of hard to believe that as I stand before you and talk about our progress on the strategic, strategic plan that's been going on here. So definitely great to hear. You'll hear from me and my experience a lot of what we gleaned from what we've developed from our staff. So as we look back at the strategic plan, you know, a lot of the big work that we started this year was around focus three. As you guys remember, we vetted multiple organizations to select focus three. They even started some training with us. We created the first draft for our cultural blueprint, which we're going to, uh, I think brand is maybe the best way to put it. And then ultimately build out, um, which is a lot of fun. And then we went through our first training for the realness leadership last week, uh, which was fantastic. We learned a lot about ourselves as leaders, this profile. And we're excited to come back to that and all just for the second round of it. I'll talk more about focus really when we start to look at it, but it's going to be a big emphasis on the work that we do. This year, we also worked for our leaders, I think, a little bit differently than we had in the past. You know, first of all, we started this as principal weeks. I can tell you they were very beneficial. Carrie and I were actually sitting in one, Mr. Lotzberg was presenting on some of the stuff that Liz and Andrew were talking about in terms of conferencing and goal setting with students around that data, he was presenting to all the other assistant principals. And we kind of looked at each other and said, we've been working with these guys for a while, but he's kind of got what we're looking for in principals. So to have that connection between assistant principals and central office was huge for us. And we do continue to work and develop leaders. And we're excited to have two new ones up from, during the business meeting. In addition, what we did was, um, you know, I, I love hearing what Liz is talking about with how we, we engage students through teachers and we really try and live that out with our, our building level leaders too. So we create a thing, right? Which, and one, on one side, it's like we had a meeting about a meeting, right? On the other side, the truth is, we're investing and engaging with our leaders to help tailor the larger meeting to a larger group to fit their specific needs. And we did that for principals and assistants. We didn't simply just repeat one from the other because those jobs really are very, very different when you're in them. So that was a lot of fun with that. And then again, with the principals and DLT, we really tried to align network to the strategic plan as, as Carrie shared earlier. So definitely a lot of fun supporting our leaders this year. Recruitment was a lot of fun this year. Uh, I had help from our team. Mr. Marshall joined me on Xavier this year. Went down there and then Miss Burstner joined me up in Toledo or Finley, I guess is where we were, right? It's quite a hike up there. It was good for us though. Currently we have, I think, two post positions. Both have candidates that we're just kind of waiting for the process to go through. We have two also in its fitted postings that will come soon. So we expect that day one, when we fully stack, uh, our recruitment, um, strategy was really to go out early. Our first job was posted in mid-February. We got feedback from our principals that the candidates seemed to be of better quality, getting them earlier compared to when we had previously posted. So that was definitely a strong thing. The other thing we did was we really prioritized where we wanted to set us. So when we were bringing people in, we really wanted to make sure that if we're going to invest in someone, they're our intervention specialist. We know this teacher shortage is, is real. I've done some research with the Dream group by now, I'm sure, to conduct through the board updates on teacher numbers and it's at a minimum ten year level of what colleges produce. So we know we've got to be very intentional and strategic with how we staff. Classroom teachers that elementary are pretty easy to line. Intervention specialist, high school math, business teachers, sometimes not. So we're very strategic with our recruitment process. And then with that, uh, we really wanted to leverage the good things about spring growth from people who are either here or leaving. So we did that, did stay interviews with all of our first, third year teachers. Some of the things that we were really believing from that is first of all, why do people stay? The people. You know, that's really here going on representing in the strategic plans, you know, eighty percent of our budget. And it makes a difference to our staff. So again, this work around focus three and culture, uh, you know, my prediction is we're going to come out of this educational age of accountability and really see a big push for culture. Reason being is we've got to fill our classrooms with how qualified teachers. And accountability is not going to keep people in classrooms. It needs to be a part of what we do. I see the shift, focusing the culture and districts do the best. Probably the ones who are going to go and make sure that it's the, the best teachers in front of the kids and the best experience as possible. Interesting about the exit interviews, you said very similar things. Where are people going to miss the most? The people. Most people left, uh, this year either to retirement or to moving. We did have some who decided to leave education altogether. But overall, um, it seems like it's the traditional exit for most people in terms of retirement or relocation. What are we looking forward to next year? All right, obviously focus three. We're going to kick off, uh, beginning of this year with our leaders for the realness leadership training. During the staff PD day, we have a group that are going to go through the R factor training, which right now I'm sure you guys about that's the main training most of our staff is going to get. And then again, we will look to build out that blueprint through branding, through lessons, through experiences, all of which will be a lot of fun actually that we'll go through. We're also going to expand our mentor program. I know when we came to you guys around the first of the year and presented some ideas, that was one thing that we were going to do. I feel like our resident educator program is really strong here. But if you guys experienced, if you come here, we didn't in the past, you're a spring growth person. So you might know a lot about education. We want to make sure that you fit here and stay here. So that, that's not, that's a retention strategy as well. So anyone who comes, regardless of how long you teach, you will get a mentor in spring growth or no longer here. And again, uh, we work really hard to make sure it's great level, same, same grade level, same department. China works a little bit different at the high school, but it's not just some person. Some person who you're actually going to build relationships. Again, people matter and that's really what we're trying to emphasize. Liz is doing a great job. I probably could have you up here. I'll hopefully not do this any disjust. But Carrie, your shift of responsibility to Liz to have her really be the point person on our, our professional development. So we're really excited to develop a piece of this strategic plan to have some personalized pathways. She's done a fantastic job of really quantifying how much professional development time you have out there and how should be allocated so that we can do the things as school leaders that we're required to do. We honor the professionals, the classrooms and the school buildings who we trust to do the professional person work that they need to do in goal setting and working. And they don't need to necessarily be in meetings all the time, kids aren't, aren't around. They can learn a lot from each other through collaboration. And Liz is doing a great job of setting up assistance for that network. Recruitment lessons learned, I shared that a little bit. We're definitely going to post early. We're tracking job fairs where we went to, how many people we actually hire from it. We post our positions through our incoming ESC consortium. And they hosted a job fair on Saturday morning. I think it was in March, I went to by myself. It was the best job fair I've ever been to. There was a lineup for spring growth, but I believe we hired eight candidates from that specific job fair. So certainly be going back there. I don't know if I'll be taking my friends, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Burstner on the red next year because we just didn't bear to forget that. So that one, that's an early help. Can I actually say, I read this is a part of the strategic plan. It's going to be more of a focus for me next year so that what we can do again as a recruitment strategy is put more pre-service teachers into our classroom. Right? That's the best interview process. That's how I got a job as a teacher, right? I went in there, I worked really hard. The principal said, we've got a job. We must just say, uh, we hired some student teachers this year as well. If this job shortage is cutting, as I'll say, it is, we want to get as many people early on before they even graduate in our schools, show them what this district and this community are all about and really keep them there. I feel like this year we did a good job in a couple of schools in the red state. We've had some connections with, and then I know I've just made some connections with Xavier over the years that, um, that have been really strong. So we're going to really be looking around our, uh, our community here and making better connections and getting more teachers on the floor, student teachers. That's going to be a push for next year. And then again, we're going to continue to support our building leaders. We're going to make a couple of shifts in this. The assistant principals are going to remain pretty much the same. We thought that was very successful. We're going to tweak a little bit of obvious on the planning today, but we'll remain pretty consistent with that practice. For our district leadership team, we're going to streamline that process. This year there were curriculum meetings and then there were DLT meetings. We're going to combine those two. And then part of our DLT meetings include leadership. If I could be maybe blunt and honest, when you're having two hour meetings and you say we're going to do leadership development, it's more of like talking and doing and learning. So we're going to pull leadership out of that. And we're really going to look strategically at the time we have with our principals. For example, on teacher workdays, which is the teacher's days, we can't call meetings. We can't mess with those days. Those are the days that we're going to pull principals out. And for larger chunk of time, uh, we're going to leverage some resources that we have through high aims, which is a group that we joined, um, to have more experiential leadership opportunities, whether it's with our team, coming up with issues and see what's going on. But I think just more of a longer, meatier, more learning marks, not just in the gym, I don't know if I can say. So we're really excited about it.
I just have one question, just one, just one. What are we doing to address the diversity of our candidates and our staff?
I mean, you can't necessarily ask the question. So when we get applicants, you know, what we see is what we see. I will tell you that as, as we've gone and look back at this year, we have hired multiple minority candidates in more positions this year. So when we're at job fairs or when we're, we're meeting for phase space, that's when that recruitment starts. So I, I know that there were two minority candidates that I've had at job fairs that I continue to connect to throughout the interview process to make sure they were from our principals and that not just they were a minority candidate, they were the best candidate who also happened to be a minority. So, so we've done that. And I think through the job fairs, we continue to try to identify candidates that look good for us that also serves as a diverse model for our.
Are there certain job fairs that would bring more diverse candidates? I know you can't ask yet, but can we set ourselves up that we're in front of?
The one thing that I know we talked about is that there are a number of them. And, um, I'm interested to work more with that group. Dream sent a representative to Howard University to do a job fair. And we didn't get anything necessarily back from that. Our, the organization has all of us in different committees. And my committee that I got on the pipeline one, so after I learned that they were going to go to Howard, I started to do research about how many colleges should produce teachers and where are they going to sell that? And I found data on the African American colleges, uh, who produces those teachers. And Howard's not even a college there. So then I started pushing back, and why don't you go to DC? Right? You shouldn't go to Tennessee State, which is closer and produces more teachers. So I think that's going to come a little bit through that. And Dream also, because I think it would be hard to come from out of state, regardless if you're a minority or not, or, and, and fit in this Midwest town. So Dream has strategies around building community, professional learning groups, making it more than just you're a member of Spring Grove or Beaver Creek or any business. That's a number more that you're in this larger, big community and all of our stuff. It's a question I would ask. Thank you.
All right. So now we come to creating a safe environment for students and staff. And the first thing I want to say really is a thank you. A thank you to our community for the support that they provide us fiscally. Because without their support, a lot of these things could not get done. And so we're thankful for that. We also have certainly some support from the state and certainly from federal government and certainly from some grants that we've received. So we're very thankful for all of that. So what you'll see in front of you tonight is, you know, some things that we've done. And this is just a quick summary. It is nothing other than that. There is a lot of sweat and time that goes into each of these projects, a lot of thinking that goes into these projects, a lot of collaboration. So during the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we've upgraded, replaced our video cameras from digital to IP cameras, uh, which has been a great enhancement for us. And we're continuing to look at those and continue to perform those replacements. We've been a little bit delayed due to some issues with the supply chain, uh, but it's getting better and also with the labor force. Upgraded the video system software. We had a really, uh, slow kind of antiquated system. The new system we put in allows us to do a lot more and allows it to do it remotely as we need to do it. Then we have the installation of bait protection systems at the high school and the junior high. That's something that certainly that we're monitoring and I think has been advantageous for our administrative team. Some improvements to facilities. Uh, we've done some asphalt resurfacing at the high school, Dennis Elementary. We are currently certainly doing one at Five Points Elementary as well for this year. And I think that's made a major improvement as well as around the campus. Some drainings, we've gotten some drainage issues resolved, getting water away from our building so that our foundations can be more stable and more secure. We've done a lot of painting in our district. We've tried to upgrade that and make that look a lot better this year. I think when people go to Spring Grove Intermediate from their open house, they're going to see a brighter environment. So we've completed those walls and those hallways to brighten it up and to make it better and also certainly some office and classroom spaces. And then roof repairs, we've continued to look at those, monitor those. I think we've made great headway and drying up our facilities and we're continuing to make progress there. And then the hardscape is concrete improvements that we've done throughout the district on various sidewalks and various other walk paths. So we've continued to monitor and work through those, uh, ideas and thoughts. And those, those come from staff, uh, those come from community members. So we want to continue to monitor those improvements. What are our next steps? We want to continue the installation of security enhancements and additional IP cameras. We're in the process of doing that. We've met with Five Points and Dennis Elementary already. We have some ideas and we've got some orders out there that we're ready to install those as quickly as we can. As an example of this, it's come out of this from integration perspective. In certain areas, we're putting in three sixty degree cameras. It cuts down on us having multiple cameras in that area that gives us a greater broad viewing capability. So that will really be advantageous for some rotunda type areas, okay, that we have. Interior, interior building improvements, we continue to look at that from a flooring perspective, a classroom environment perspective from student desk, from student activity areas. And so we continue to look at doing, uh, interior and exterior improvements. And then I think this is a focal point for us and it could tie right into what Matt was talking about. And that is certainly preventive maintenance of our existing facilities. We want to maintain, uh, what we have and sustain it as long as we possibly can through improvements. But I think the second bullet there, providing educational opportunities for our business services personnel. That's bus drivers, uh, you know, it's, it's custodians. It's those that are out there doing those types of work each and every day that don't have as many opportunities. And so we want to enhance those opportunities for them to learn as well and be more integrated in what the district is doing and communicate and hear their voice and what they need. We just recently sent our head custodians, uh, to a workshop. It was at West Carrollton High School or West Carroll Schools. And it was sponsored by the Ohio Association of School Business Officials. They met with fifteen other school districts. And so the head custodians were able to sit with their peers. And so the head custodians were able to sit with their peers and hear about what's going on in other districts. How do they manage time? What do cleaning methodologies do they have? And what equipment do they use? And we had an equipment supplier there doing some demonstrations. So it was very valuable. And each of them came out of saying, we're re-energized now. We're ready to take some of this back to our buildings for our cleaning processes. Uh, we're also ready for next year. They want to participate in the 2024 event as well. So it was very positive, it was a great event, and I think we had great input, uh, once the event was completed. So, any questions?
I'm just impressed that you sent them to that because I think that sometimes they get overlooked of the importance of networking and talking to others and even like time management. So I think that's great.
Yeah, yeah. One of the sessions actually was, what would your mom think if she walks through your building? Right? And so each of them kind of, their eyes got big and bright, you know? Uh, and you know, it was pretty simple, you know, but it was, they got the message. And, and they said, you know, we never thought of it that way, but that's the way we need to think about it. So it is our honor. Thank you.
All right, the last session of the hearing. Um, so resource allocation, I know it's not always the most exciting piece to talk about, but obviously for tonight, uh, a lot of the very things and initiatives that were leading the district and that we will continue to move to the district forward and improve the student experience and achievement. So this year we really focused on our costs and what our costs are, where we're spending, um, and we reallocated funds in order to move some of these initiatives forward. Um, and we did spend a lot of time, as Carrie mentioned in the beginning, working with our DLT and our district cabinet to really look at what all of our costs are and what we're going to move some of these forward. And some of those, we're not able to just be reallocated. So we spent a lot of time developing that plan and we brought to you during the board retreat, um, to have a very conservative set of items that we really needed to move some of those strategic things forward. Um, so during that plan, we were able to, um, bring in more technology starting next year for our classrooms. I know this is the end, we're going to get on some of these items too, um, where we are going to have additional, set up additional sub-costs for our teachers to be able to be pulled out to bring in live data in order to, um, to really ensure that what we need is to be, uh, the sensor equipment, we're purchasing this van, more special education, a lot of the transition program, uh, PCEA for the district. So there's a lot of ideas that were within that plan that we brought to you back, um, in January that was added to the district's forecast in order to start pushing some of these initiatives forward. Um, and I think that's where, um, another piece, you can go to the next slide, just, we'll talk about communication. That is another real focus, um, that we are, um, taking on to really ensure that everybody understands where we are financially. Um, and we, we, Carrie and I did several things this year. I put a bunch of them on here, I don't have to read all of them, but we've been giving out to as many state orders as we can, internally and externally, to try to really show where we're at financially, not only that we are fiscal responsible, um, with all the resources that are provided to us, but that we really do operate out of a very structured budget. And in order to move some of these initiatives forward, we are going to have to be in additional resources in the future. So we're going to really continue that. And I think that's what our focus is, Carrie and I, as well as our some district leadership team, to really look at 2324. And it's going to be expanding on all of these different items that we're, that we already are currently doing. Um, we're going to be implementing some new, um, strategic items in order to, um, be built. So we're going to have some quarterly bunch of meetings with all of our administration, our buildings, as well as, um, our internal cabinet team, to really look at everything that we're purchasing and say, okay, do we need to re-prioritize anything or are we, you know, what do we have? Where were we at and do we need to re-prioritize to make sure some of these new initiatives are moving forward? Um, we're in the process of developing a long-term plan financially. We're going to have a tech plan, a textbook plan, a capital needs plan, to really ensure that we have everything built in, it's what we're going to need in the future. Um, also, we're going to be looking at the great opportunity position that you guys, we had talked about in the earlier, a few, four years ago, and really look at additional ways that we can apply the grants to, in order to achieve some of these needs. And then also compound on our partnerships that we currently have to see some of these things come up with some of those initiatives. So those are really some of our main, um, items that we're really looking at. It's really just going to be communicating and making sure everybody understands where we're at financially so that when we do have to ask everybody to understand what we need and why we need it. So I think that's, that's on communication and resources.
And so in front of you is a very condensed document that I rolled out today with the cabinet because this strategic plan is, it, it does a lot. And sometimes it gets really overwhelming and hard to navigate. So I wanted to bring it into something that we can use that we build our collective capacity as a team. And so we're calling it the Panther Experience. And so you'll see, and, um, I didn't give you the whole document. So every experience, there's five experiences, will have the shell of what you say for the student experience. So we're going to have a student experience with a commitment that every Panther will demonstrate academic rigor. And you see the, the components that are, what are our objectives, A5, six twelve? What initiatives are helping us achieve those objectives? And then how are we tracking that data? What are the key questions we're going to ask about that data? And then there's a support virtual report back, um, three times a year. And then we will have the wellbeing experience with a commitment that every Panther will be safe physically and psychologically. Our culture experience is every Panther will feel sense of belonging. Our capital experience is every Panther will benefit from sound physical stewardship, transparent financial practices, responsible use of tax and money. And then finally, our communication engagement experience is that every, every voice will be heard. And, and living out these experiences, then we get to live out the values that were created by our, our footprint team. And that means we get to put people first, we get to always grow, and we get to be better together. And so this is just a little bit of a preview and here in development, we just stepped out and started to really crush this out today.
Kind of quickly reading, um, see where this is. So we've got the strategic plan thing with the five circles around it. But then there's the experiences. What are, where are the experiences pulled from? Are they from the different areas or, can you just help me make that connection?
So we, we looked through, so we might word it differently, but the essence is still the same from each, the priorities group from each section.
So wellbeing experience was creating a safe environment for students and staff?
Yes.
Scott?
So it'll take some of Scott's, that'll take some of culture, that'll take some of PEA. So just trying to make it a better working document than this.
Right, so it's an easy one to quickly refer to what, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is great, I like it.
Thank you. A lot of good information, a lot of, a lot of good work. Yeah, okay. Item three point three is the, um, actually, uh, contractor agreement with Real Life Church. They've been a partner of ours for many, many years. Uh, they meet actually out at the Five Points Elementary School. And, uh, they do some tremendous things, uh, also for the district. And so, uh, they were ready for renewal. They are going to construct a new church. Uh, they're hoping that it'll be done sometime in the winter of 2023 or spring of 2024. Uh, so we wrote the agreement to make sure that there was a clause where they could, uh, you know, get out of the agreement without any financial discourse whatsoever. Uh, and I told him that, you know, timing was fine, just let us know, uh, when they need to do that. So, uh, this is just a new agreement. We did increase the expense or the cost to them just a little bit because costs are rising and they were accepting of that as well. It went from five hundred and seven dollars to, they agreed to six hundred, uh, because of the, the increasing costs of utilities and some labor. So, good partner of ours and I think it's a, a good agreement for the district.
Thank you, tomorrow.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, uh, the city of Springboro reached out to us, uh, a while back about holding a, uh, festival party kind of thing for us. Asked us, uh, to use parking lots and location issued off the fireworks. Uh, so this is something that's happening yearly, um, in Springboro. Uh, so it's got people from I, uh, out of the city a couple of times. Coming out for, um, an area where this can occur, a previous area where it happened. We noticed that we might have some debris, uh, on our rooftops, so we just wanted to avoid that. So we pushed it back a little further south, um, to the fields of the way our buildings, we run tests. Uh, we click retention park department and Rossi's, since the fireworks, all the tests seem to go well. Uh, so the event will take place July fourth, uh, it's a city-sponsored event. And they're just doing it in our parking lots. Uh, so they'll have stage, they'll have food trucks, restrooms, anywhere, I think it'll be on them. Um, and we're just kind of hosting it, um, in the space, different way. Uh, it's set up, you know, July third, the event will take place July fourth. Any questions?
Mr. Member, President, and Members of the Board, on the agenda tonight, first of all, this will be a lot harder than last one. Um, the next two items are our MAP assessment renewals. One is for K5 and one is for six twelve because the budget is concerned. Um, we are requesting that we renew. These are our current MAP assessment licenses and the new version just to renew. Uh, we're going to present it to you next meeting for approval. And in addition, Andrea and I would like to do a presentation for you guys in September at this panel board meeting to give you more information about MAP because we keep talking about it. So you can kind of see what teachers see and get some more information about what it is.
The only additional is high school, ELA, geometry, algebra, and science eight. So those are the new ones that we talked about, the phase, the phase in of MAP and then the phase two of MAP. So that phase two of MAP you'll see as an increase in our costs over this year to be able to expand the program into the ninth and tenth grade level. Thank you.
Yes, one. I was actually hoping that we were, well, session, but we're not going to have one of them a little bit. So I'll just go ahead and talk real quick. On the budget compliance committee did meet back on May nineteen. And we spent our hours together going through the detailed assumptions of the fiber forecast and our overall financial picture and we're contented. Um, I'd be happy to go through the fiber forecast here if it will be. I'm excited. Um, otherwise, I'll be just like, the fiber forecast that I presented to the board back in May.
Any other business? All right, let's back up.
All right. I don't have to bring policies too much, but there was a special update. And this is first reading for a special, um, for, for the records commission. So this was a response to some recent inquiries that have been happening across the state regarding these required records commissions. And so this policy was just, um, meant to clarify and provide some structure and procedure around requirements for a records commission. Um, and so that's what this policy is. Um, what we've done on, so we have a records commission, I'll give you a really quick brief update on what that is. Anytime we have to dispose of records, we use our records retention schedule. That's been approved by the Higher Historical Society, which is now the district connection. And anytime that records are able to be destroyed because the time limit that we're required to keep them expires, you have to go through a process, fill out forms, send it in. And then we meet, the superintendent, treasurer, and our president meet and we look at what's going to be disposed of, sign it, and then it gets to us. Well, we have to now make sure, which is what we call our attachment, to show that other than we can notice at meetings, that we are actually receiving notice the date and time that this is an actual physical meeting. Um, in order for us to have, be able to, we have to prove it, we have to post it and show that we are having a meeting about records commission. And so this is just a policy showing that we're going to do that.
So it doesn't have to be a meeting with us?
No, it's just, it's real about us and we have to keep it, so we have to. So I'll probably treat it like I do our tax budget here and we're probably going to be like ten minutes before maybe our meeting sometime, probably in September. And it always has to be a special meeting. So that's what this policy is for what it's for first reading. And then, um, my next item is our financials, um, for May. So our revenue for May, you have the detailed financials on it in the remarks, but just a quick overview. Um, three point seven million in revenue just under that for the month, two point four, uh, like we said. So we won't be receiving any of the revenue from taxes until sometime in March, July. Um, we received a one point three million in safe coming and for us to lose this money's revenue. We are on track still for a revenue coming in for, for June third year as anticipated. Um, for our expenses, we came at just seven to five million. Um, I was able to move some of the high ESR expenses into ESR this past month. So I noticed on the cash flows it's negative for supplies, but that's just me moving some of those expenses into ESR. Um, and everything else is coming in as expected. Um, we are not going to receive our, um, seventy thousand dollar reimbursement for our EBR program before we close the books, it's not going to be coming in until July. So that kind of will make cash flows a little bit, but I still am very close to what I expect for June. Um, and we have seventeen point five million in cash as we close on the year. So it's about a hundred and five days of operating cash on hand. And I expect to, yes, still be happy to do it in half days when we close in June.
Is there a motion to accept four one, a four two?
Lisa?
Yes.
Stay?
Let me stay.
Elijah?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, all right, four point three, approval of donation of five hundred dollars from my, you know, Emerson for the special experiment and approval of donation of one thousand dollars for being their L O G P T L towards the fifth grade practice that has been promoted to school.
Is there a motion to approve four, what was it, three and four four? Second.
I see.
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, uh, come before you seeking approval for, um, five point one, a personal report. Uh, a lot of standard business you'll see on there that happens annually. Uh, I brought Charlotte here to look it out around, so those numbers are on there approved. Uh, we have instructors that are on there as typical, uh, and then just some, um, working hires as well. Five point two, um, we're bringing to you the approval of an internship contract from Mr. Aker. He's moving from, um, Springboro High School to Springboro Intermediate. Five point three, it's very exciting for me to share this as she is in attendance today. Uh, we are very, very excited to bring Leslie onto our team. She comes to us from, um, Springville Schools where she works as a central office administrator there. Um, we've met Leslie a couple of times, so we're going to reprocess, always impressive. As this kind of shook out, um, we knew she was the right fit. We actually reached out and recruited her and, um, you know, as well, and we're excited to have you, Leslie, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Leslie, you're taking over for Jimmy, right?
Yes. I don't know.
Freshman, right, principal?
Pice.
Pice, is that right? Well, nobody told me that. I've got to talk to Clay then, but he and I are going to be talking a lot. All right, I apologize.
All right. Section five point four, um, it's always exciting when one of our own can be promoted and you can see them running through the ranks. And that's exactly what we have here. Um, again, coming new into Springboro, I've met lots of people. Uh, Mr. Bettner and I have been on several committees together as, uh, from a teacher level, we seem to have instituted lots of talks of, um, being in leadership role for these actual leadership roles. Uh, so when Mr. Ross goes and moves into the department here, when he can apply, uh, we took it through the formal process. Um, you know, it started with a small team at Central Office, then it went back into building. We love them, they love them, we're excited. I recommend you all the kids in Springboro as well, and you can still be with today, uh, five points elementary. So it's great, it's an honor for me to recommend even better to be assistant principal of five points elementary.
Is there a motion to approve five point four?
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, item five point six is the athletic report. You can see there are lots of game day workers on here as we prepare for the next year's, uh, sports season. Um, and then kind of to accompany that is, uh, item five point seven is what we're going to, what we've got approval, which is their game worker lead scale, uh, which is the same, so it doesn't matter.
Is there a motion to accept five? Is there a motion to accept 5.6 and 5.7?
So moved.
Second.
Volcom?
Yes. Steve?
Epstein?
Balaji?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations. Yes, welcome.
Item 6.3 is the recommendation for approval of the rental agreement with Real Life Church.
Is there a motion to accept 6.1? Yep.
So moved. Second.
Volcom?
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I've got a couple contracts on the agenda tonight for approval. Two are ESC contracts. The one for Butler County ESC is our vision and orientation of mobility services for all the county here. This is our second year with Butler County ESC, so we're hoping to see providers. And then Warren County, they're helping us with some ESY services for students. The other contracts are renewals for current students.
Is there a motion to accept 7.1?
Second.
Second.
Bad, yes, Steve?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
That's right.
I feel like I'm so cold.
It is so cold.
I do have, surprise, surprise. First off, I just want to, I think that Tyler Laspe is a really tough act to follow, but I just, when I heard that it was Ethan, I could not imagine somebody else stepping into that, that position. He experienced his power as a, truly power as a teacher with our youngest, and the thing that shows out to me, and I had heard it from other people, but until I experienced it with my son, you care for students in a way that is, you don't, you just don't see everywhere. And it is, you know, I'm a data person, and when I ask questions around his data, Ethan knew every bit of it, knew what he was addressing, and I was like, hey, I'm really impressed here. And he did that for all of his students. That is his reputation of caring enough for every student, did extra stuff of having him check in later in the day. It was not his responsibility to do, but he knew that that was some extra help that was needed. So kudos to you. You bring, you're going to bring so much to Five Points, and I'm just thrilled to keep you in district because you're a gem, so congratulations. Yeah, and I'm sure you're wonderful too. I'll say a few things about you later, I promise.
Thank you.
The second thing is just thank you guys for the strategic goal updates. I know that that was a lot, and I do have questions, I apologize, but you did an amazing job, and just to see us moving ahead of really doing something with these and not having it just be something that we check off and say, yeah, we have strategic goals, but we never look at them. So I just want to say thank you for everybody that had a part of that. The last thing is just to invite everybody to Juneteenth this weekend at North Park. We've got our Jubilee Celebration Friday night, you need tickets ahead of time. And then we have Saturday from 11 to 8, the bands are absolutely amazing, it's like different ones every hour, and we have lots of booze all around, we've got three-on-three going on at, or at the YCA. So just if you're in town, please come to it, it's an amazing, amazing event, and it's important that it's not just black people there or brown people there, it's important that we are there supporting it also, so I encourage you to come out, it is not just an event for, for the people that have been more directly impacted. So that would be my challenge, because we saw a bit of a change last year, and I would just love to see our community wrapping our arms around the event also and supporting. It's at North Park. Yep. Thanks, David.
Okay, so congratulations to both our administrators, Volcom, and then certainly thanks to Mr. Aker for swinging over to us, and taking that role, he'll have to get down with my son next year, so. Let's see, and to carry on what Lisa was saying, really appreciate the depth of the strategic plan update, certainly liked the kind of look backwards and then the look forward, and kind of, you know, meshing together in terms of what you're going to carry forward and build on, I think that's really important for any strategic plan. You know, to show not only progress, but like growth and incremental improvement, like, you know, Lisa said earlier, we're already a great district, so, you know, we're probably not going to see these massive step functions all the time of big improvements, but it's the small 1, 2, 3% improvements that build on each other. And clearly, you guys are going to get, there were many times when you guys were talking well over my head, but I could see the passion that you had, I could see the, you know, level of knowledge that you had, so that, as a board member, makes me feel very good that we've got the right people in place, and that, you know, you know your Ps and Qs, so I don't have to worry about that. But again, thank you, it was an awesome update, and we look forward to that in the future.
Sorry, I think our last meeting was like 40 minutes. I like Jones.
Go ahead, Danny.
Poorly.
It wasn't crazy.
Yeah, but appreciate you guys, your company, but no, just to echo what you've said, just to me, really did appreciate the update on strategic plan, and we're revisiting that, great to hear about all the different things that we're doing in that regard, for our students and for our staff, and just a little bit as we get in further into years, starting to be sensible metrics around the results that we discuss, I just applaud a great effort to appreciate everybody's passion and energy that they shared tonight. And yeah, congratulations to our new administrators, and welcome. And just thank you too, to the, a couple donations in there as well, some thank you to folks that continue to support our district financially as well. So.
Just kind of following with everybody else, thanks for the strategic plan, it was very, very detailed, and got through it okay.
You're a power.
That's right. Also, for the congratulations to our two new administrators, and for your reference, when I abstain, it's not because I don't like what's happening there, and this kind of goes to you, Leslie, I thought you would want to be the freshman vice principal, and you and I would have been dealing quite a bit because I'm the freshman football coach.
Gotcha, okay.
So I'll have to get together with Clay, and that's part of the reason why Jimmy left, was so that we have to deal with him. Thanks for the donations, and thanks for your patience over there, guys, just like Mr. Balaji says, so. I think that's about it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Bad, yes, Steve?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.